We are live in in Pasan.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Safety Climate Committee meeting, which meet once a month from four to six P M. And we want to open up with the roll call. Jamila Smith Folds.
Present.
All right, and present for myself. And then we can't go back and do it approve other. Well, yeah, the prove that we do the prove our agenda, but it's just a minute. Okay, do we approve the agenda?
I like to motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Okay, so move. All in favor of proving the agenda?
Yes.
And yes, for me. And now we proceed on to. The is a public comment?
So let me see if we have any public comment right now. I am looking and not seeing any hands raised. I'm still promoting principals as they come in. We've got a large group here today, so I think this will be pretty exciting as we go forward. No public comment, though.
Okay.
Trustee Christian.
Go ahead.
When the principals do their presentations, could they say the name of their school? Just so the public is aware of what school they're with? I'm sure they were already going to say that. I just wanted to make put it out there to make sure they say the name of their school.
Yes.
So with that, we're to item number one. And I'm going to let Ann Shin go ahead and introduce what we have for you. We thought the best way to really talk about graduation is let the experts at each site talk about what we're planning and where we're trying to go. So Ann, you want to introduce it and tell us how we're going to go through this?
Sure. Yes. Thank you, Dr. Will. Good afternoon, trustees. Good afternoon, amazing site leaders, district ops team, and everyone else out in Zoom land. Thank you for joining us today. We are really excited to present our site graduation plans to all of you. We have been working very hard over the last few months, meeting regularly with our site leaders and site graduation coordinators, who have also been meeting with their site staff, the graduating seniors, their families, and all of the stakeholder groups on campus to best understand what it is that they would like in their culminating ceremony. And again, all of the, oh, hi, David. I'm sorry. That surprised me to see David on the screen. David Johnson. To make sure that we're providing the ceremony that all of our graduates and their families truly want during this time. We know this has been a tremendously challenging time for our graduates, missing out on so many in-person opportunities that we really felt as though we really wanted to be able to offer a ceremony that allows for some in-person engagement along with other types of ceremonies, if that's what the graduates and their families are choosing. So we will again present the sites, the site plans from each of our sites, and we will present them in the same format. We will begin by saying the school name, the principal name, the date and time of the ceremony, as well as the location of the ceremony. Then we will go into a slide that explains our stakeholder input, all of the groups that they have met with, the survey results that they have from these groups that helped them to determine which type of ceremony that they were going to have on their campuses. Then we will share a slide that shows the plan itself. It'll be a description of what will it look like for our graduates, our dignitaries, and all of our attendees on that day. And we will conclude with the last slide, which will review over the very, very important safety protocols that will be on campus that will be implemented on that day for each of our ceremonies. So again, each of our site leaders will go through those four slides as they explain their site specific plans to all of us. All right, are we ready and excited? Okay, so I'm going to do the presentation. So let me share my screen. And we are presenting these in the order of the ceremony. So we will start with the first ceremony to the last ceremony in order. So without further ado, the first ceremony that we will engage in is. Uh-oh, why is it? Why is my slide not moving? Okay, well, now it went too far. Okay, so our first ceremony is Middle College High School on May twenty second. Principal Prak.
Yes, I'm here. Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, trustee Christian and trustee Smith Folds. I look forward to meeting you in person one day. My name is Feedy Prak. I am the principal at Middle College High School. This is my fifth year here. And I'm excited to also announce that we just received the California Distinguished School Awards. We're very grateful for that. Middle College High School is planning on, with the help of El Cerrito High School, having an in-person stadium graduation on Saturday, May twenty second at eleven A M. My parents had the opportunity to choose from all of our high schools, but because we're not able to hold a ceremony at Contra Costa College, when I did the survey, they all selected El Cerrito High School. So why are we choosing an in-person stadium graduation? Well, as a parent myself, whose daughter was not able to participate in ceremony last year because of the pandemic, I wanted to make sure that we fought hard to honor our students and their parents' wishes this year. We believe that having the in-person graduation will not only provide our families with some form of a traditional graduation ceremony, but it would definitely reward them for all the challenges that our students have had to endure this year. And so just having them in school this way, where they get to at least walk the stage, will be a huge, huge success for our families and students. And we did survey our school site council and our A P A C group and our students, and overwhelmingly majority voted for in-person graduation as opposed to the drive-through. And they would rather have a small number of families attend an in-person one than a lot of people attend the drive-through. So they really want this for their students. So we have a total of six to nine graduating seniors. And we want to just provide as much of a traditional ceremony as we can with the procession. Students are going to be speaking and providing some type of performance. I'm actually going to finalize that with them tomorrow because I wanted to let them know that it's been officially approved. I didn't know that until after this meeting. So I'm hoping that will happen at the end. But we will have our students do a poem as well and have an opportunity to take pictures for the grad images. So as you know, Middle College High School is a very unique program where we don't have our own sites, and it's just me and a part-time counselor. I don't have any C S Os or staff. So this is where I'm definitely going to need the support of central office and also of just our district leaders. So I will need to work with everybody and have all hands on deck when it comes to the logistical pieces and the needs of our site to ensure that safety and C D C guidelines are enforced. And of course, you know, we're going to do all we can to make sure there's face coverings and that everybody is social distance, at least six feet. We're going to communicate with our families and work with our students to make sure everybody knows where to sit and so forth, and have all of the needs met in terms of hand sanitizers and and over-communicate with making sure there's a health screening and so forth. But definitely would not be able to do this without the district support. So I'm just grateful that we have El Cerrito High School, who has graciously offered us their site. And then I have faith that Dr. Shin and her team and Mr. Booker and everybody else will, you know, just volunteer and help us. So that's where we're at. And I just thank you guys for just giving us the time to present.
Thank you so much, Principal Prak. All right, we're excited. Just in a couple of weeks, Middle College.
Yes, less than three weeks.
Oh, my goodness, less than three weeks.
No pressure.
Yes, no pressure, but we cannot wait.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Hercules High School on June third. Dr. Paul Mancing.
And I haven't seen Paul come in yet.
Okay, so let's.
I I think he might be, I think he's out for three days, and I'm trying to get one of the A Ps to come on board and do the presentation. So we're probably going to do it after if we if we can.
Let me know if you need, let me know if you need to do Hercules, because I worked the graduation before, because we've had ours outside. So you just you call on me if you need.
Or then.
The presenter at the end, trustee.
And Hercules is the one that has been doing similar, so there won't be as many changes as some of the other sites. So we're working on getting one of the A Ps in to do that. If not, we will do that one last. But we want the voice to be from the site, if at all possible.
All right.
Julio will work on that while we're moving forward with the next.
Right, then that.
Because I'm also looking for someone from Kennedy I haven't seen yet either.
All right, well, Julio, let's look for them as well. But this is Kibby's time to shine. Pinole Valley High School, Principal Kibby Klein, on June fourth.
Thank you, and thank you, trustees. And on behalf of my colleague, Dr. Mancing, it is possible that Hercules currently hosting a softball game, perhaps he has responsibility there. Seven nothing Pinole Valley in the first inning, just saying. Let's take a look at what we're going to do here at P V. After pulling our students and our adults as well, it was clear there was a real split between desire to do last year's version with a drive-through graduation. We have a really lovely amphitheater setting, and it's actually designed really elegantly for car traffic to come through and those who wanted to do a ceremony on the field. Ultimately, what decided it was the number of people who could get to participate. Those who wanted more than two people said that, you know, I've got five, I've got six, I've got grandma and grandpa. I want to be able to bring more people, opted and said, you know, a car ceremony would be great. We could put two cars, you know, we can fit two cars. We can drive through people who had like really acrimonious divorces, love this idea as well, saying, you know, I can't stand being next to my ex. And I don't certainly won't, you know, they're going to want to come to the graduation, but I don't want to sit next to them. And so with with the numbers which came in, we looked to be with about eighty percent of the folks weighing in. A hundred and twenty people opted for drive-in, and a hundred and forty opted to stay and do a ceremony out on the field. We decided why not do both? We have the means and the capability on June the fourth to do exactly that. And so what we're going to do at Pinole Valley is begin our day's ceremony, starting at one o'clock in the afternoon, with the ceremony out at the driving facility, meaning that cars will be lined up in the parking lot. People will be slotted in fifteen-minute increments to come in, and we will be able to get that many cars through in a two-and-a-half-hour ceremony, as we did last year as well. The cars will enter, a limit of two cars per family. The cars will drive onto campus, and they will park just, they'll be waved through. Security will be at the gate, and then at the back of the gym, as the cars enter, the graduate comes out of the car, ascends the stairs, comes to what's already kind of a stage-like setting, because it's the top of an amphitheater, pick up their diploma, pose for pictures, get back in the car, drive out. If the cars wish to honk and flash their lights and turn on their windshield wipers, all the more festive, as they will then exit the out Pinole Valley Road off to their post-secondary high school life. When the drive-through part of the ceremony is done, and all people who ascend from the cars will be masked, and the families, having probably lived in quarantine with themselves, we don't feel the need to to do any further checks on, only the graduate will be asked to mask, in this case, to come up and get the diploma. As this is going on, we will give ourselves an hour and a half gap, allowing us ample time to get our field set up, where we will have the graduate sitting on the bleachers and the parents sitting on the field. Reason for this being that the parents would want an unblocked shot to video and to see the graduates, and the bleachers themselves being kind of precarious and steep might provide more of a risk for older people who wish to see their graduates there. Depending on the number of adults willing, able to be there, it looks like we can at this point invite as many as three adults per family member, and the hundred and sixty graduates will be in the bleachers. They will be called down to come lined up, maintaining social distancing, as we will have the bleachers marked off in six-foot increments. The chairs on the field will also be either paired or put together as three, and there'll be six feet distance between each pod of parents. Graduates will come down from the bleachers. We will need a stage which we will put in front of our scoreboard, and myself and the administrative team will do the logistics of welcoming the graduates to the stage, one at a time, picking up diploma, then descending from the stairs, going back to the bleachers. So what we're hoping to do is kind of the best of both worlds and satisfy both our constituencies. Those who want to see a traditional on-field graduation will be able to do so from five o'clock until seven o'clock in the evening, and that will follow those who did the drive-through ceremony, which happens from one until three thirty. The field ceremony will have the traditional elements of graduation, meaning valedictorian speeches, robed students coming, and parents taking photographs throughout. What we anticipate is that all people who are graduating the class of twenty-one will have something memorable to remember this year by, and that we will neither have to crowd nor hurry any people, because the facilities lend themselves to being able to do both styles of graduation. We will solidify those numbers as we get closer to graduation, so that we will be able to invite people with two weeks to spare, to let them know which graduation ceremony they're going to take part in. But at Pinole Valley, we will begin again with a drive-in ceremony and then conclude with an on-field graduation.
All right, thank you so much. Sounds like we have to attend two ceremonies at Pinole Valley.
You can you can split. You can like come to the first one and then send the send the relief team in for the for the second one. But yeah, if you're there for June fourth, you can have a little bit of both.
Yes, we look forward to seeing them both. All right, next we have on June fifth Greenwood Academy.
Good afternoon, everybody. Phil Johnson, my first year at Greenwood, and I'm really excited about graduation. We're going to do it on Saturday, June fifth at ten o'clock, and we're going to, and I really like to promote our school. So we decided that we were going to have it at Greenwood. We contacted leadership, who we share campus with, and they agreed to let us use their quad, because it's a bigger area. But again, I really wanted to have it at Greenwood, because I wanted our our kids to kind of like own our school when we do our graduation. We actually are doing two as well. We didn't know what graduation was going to look like earlier in the year, so we we went out and we got a video graduation, which the kids had already started doing. So they already did their little presentations. We sent in everything. I want to give thanks to my office manager and one of my teachers, Lisa Lipscomb and Jania Alexander, because they kind of hooked that up, and they also hooked up this graduation that we're going to be doing on June fifth. We surveyed our seniors, and it was like a hundred percent, everybody wanted to do it in person, and I was down with that. So again, we're going to do it in the quad area at Leadership. We're going to shut down H Street. We have everything pretty much set up. It's going to be your traditional graduation, you know, we're going to have speakers, valedictorian, you know, hopefully, you know, people from the school board that will be there. Nothing elaborate. We're going to, it should take about an hour. Afterwards, we're going to set up a booth area where kids could come in and take pictures after school, because we, again, we really want to promote the school. And I think the whole thing should take about an hour and a half, and then we're going to be out. We're going to be following the district protocols, so there's nothing new there. And we we pretty much put our safety plan together, and again, I'm excited about doing this.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. We're excited about attending your event very soon. Okay, and next we have Deansah High School on June fifth. Principal Segler, are you ready?
I'm ready. Hi, everyone. I am Summer Segler, the principal of Deansah. We too are on June fifth at ten o'clock A M. And then after our graduation ceremony, which will actually take place in the Hercules High School Stadium, because the capacity there is much larger than ours. We want to do a farewell picture party socially distanced, of course, at the Deansah campus between one and two P M. Can we do the next slide, Ann? Perfect. So we came to this conclusion through multiple surveys with our senior class. Just we kept surveying them as needs changed, and really it became clear that their first priority was how many people would be able to watch them graduate. The second priority was a traditional ceremony, which really was more of a parent than a student priority, but a lot of graduation is for the parents. And then there was a third priority of a last touch point as an entire class. So by using the Hercules facility, we'll be able to provide the same number of tickets as a standard vehicle. We can host one ceremony where we can come together. And by hosting the photo party, students can have a last experience on our campus, and our parent club is working on setting up decorations under all the Deansah signs, so students can pick their favorite viewpoint of Deansah and have a little bit of fun. So the ceremony itself will be a traditional ceremony, complete with speeches and a performance by our jazz dance students. At the end of the ceremony, students will file off and meet their families and be encouraged not to linger or crowd at Hercules. And then once again, we'll open four different areas of our campus for students to come take photos with their family and with whatever fun decorations that we have up to make sure that it feels like a Deansah event. And safety, so as Ms. Smith Folds is probably the most aware, there's that long driveway going into Hercules, and so we will be doing checkpoints in the cars as they come in to make sure that the cars have a graduate, that we know that everyone attending is on the list to be there supporting the graduate. And the purpose of that is that we really want to take tickets at the door and make sure that people have already been screened, so we don't get a logjam, and we can get people quickly through the door and seated. Obviously, we need everyone in masks. There will be hand sanitizers, spectators, and students will be spaced. We will allow students to take the mask off for their graduation photo. And then once again, back at campus, everything will be outside and distanced, and at Hercules, everything is outside and distanced.
I was muted. I apologize. Thank you so much, Summer. Great. Okay, now moving on to adult education on June seventh. Principal Carr.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, trustee Christian and trustee Smith Folds. We are scheduled for six to eight P M. in the waning lights at Dejawn Middle School Basketball Court. So we anticipate actually a ninety-minute ceremony at at most. The reason why we chose Dejawn Middle School Basketball Courts is that our high school diploma and G E D preparation programs, both are housed at Building E in the Dejawn Adult Center at the corner of Thirty-Fifth and Chancellor. And so this is, you know, the the contact point for our our students. We've been, we originally started with the idea of a drive-through, but the the concept of a drive-in graduation began to take hold in teacher discussions. And so we haven't really figured out the, we did not figure out a way to really get a good student survey, since we have Spanish G E D, English G E D, high school diploma, and then we have a special education, high school diploma, and trying to merge all of those thoughts. But the drive-in graduation ceremony really took hold as far as people being able to bring a vehicle with as many people as there are seat belts in the vehicle to attend. And so we do see that we'll control entry at the parking lot gate. And I guess I do have my, I'll go through safety protocols in a minute then at that. And then we will have parking spaced out and and notated, so people don't just park randomly. But the the concept is to have a stage, although in our principal discussions last week, we're we're going through the the difficulty of stages, so we might be on a flatbed truck. We're not, we're we're just not sure at that point, but we do want to have some sort of elevated space so the graduates can be seen over other vehicles. And so the ceremony will involve some brief speeches, both by students and by staff, and then we will do staff recognition, as we have two staff members who will be leaving us at the end of the year. We were anticipating to use kind of the the college method, and that the students will have an index card so that we don't have to do rehearsals. They'll be asked, there'll be a monitor that will ask them to leave the vehicle and to go line up and and social distance at the at the bottom of the stage. And then they will hand their card to the name reader, and then they will go and collect their diploma cover, and they can be unmasked for the photograph at that point. And then they'll return to their vehicle, but we're going to ask that all family members remain in the vehicles and not get out to take photographs, because we feel we can't really control the spacing at the foot of the stage for that. At the conclusion of the ceremony, then the we'll be able to exit through both gates the over off of, I don't even remember what the name of the street is, over at the at the gym and multipurpose room side, that we'll be able to use both to do efficient exiting. The next for the check-in, what we'll do, we'll make sure that the graduate is in the front seat, either as the driver or the passenger, since that may be, since we do have adult graduates. And then we'll make sure that the graduate will be issued a mask. Again, I think as Mr. Kleinman had referenced, these are people who have been perhaps sheltering, and that's the responsibility of the people in the vehicle to decide whether they will mask or not. But we will ask that the graduate mask upon exiting the vehicle, and we'll also do a forehead or a wrist temperature check on the graduate at that time. They will remain in the vehicle throughout the ceremony until they're asked to leave. And I think that all the rest of that is kind of a repeat of what I had said before.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Carr. Okay, next we have Richmond High School on June eighth. Principal DeLeong.
Good afternoon, board members, Mr. Will, Ann Shin, and Udo Franco. So we are having a graduation journey here at Richmond High School Stadium. We surveyed our seniors, and they want the maximum amount of parents in the graduation. So they picked, of course, have three graduation sessions. So one of nine, if you go one back, one slide back, one at one P M. and one at five P M. And that way assures that each student will get between five to six tickets. For the details on the graduation, I hand this off to Mr. Hill there.
Hey, everyone. If you go back one more slide, sorry, we're two ahead. There we go. So a little bit of context for this, it was at Richmond High School, our graduation committee, which we have every year, met with our leadership students originally about a drive-through. Our students actually ended up contacting Board of Ed members, signing petitions, and even speaking at board meetings to bring up that they really wanted an opportunity to graduate at the stadium because of, you know, it's been such a tough year. So at that time, we had designed, based on the original capacity of our stadium, to do three graduations, so that we could at least have some guests for each one. We found out recently that the that our capacity has increased dramatically to meet the county's thirty-three percent guideline. And so with that, we actually had a meeting this morning with our entire senior class to talk to them and have a discussion about what they wanted to see, and they have chosen three graduations in order to incorporate more guests and have our families there socially distanced with masks on. All right, next slide, please. All right. So we will be hosting a practice the day before with just our students from nine A M. to one. So each graduation cohort will get an opportunity to go and practice. What we're really excited about is that each graduation will incorporate at least two of our academies, including the teachers, including the students and their families. So there will be an opportunity to make each graduation unique. And it also gives us, with respect to our valedictorian and salutatorian, also an opportunity to expand the speeches that are going to be able to be presented as we're doing these different graduations. All of the graduations are planned to be livestreamed, and we're going to encourage our families to do watch parties at home for those that are not going to be able to make it. By holding to this three graduations, we are estimating around five or six guest tickets per student. And in order to accompany that, all student graduates will enter into the north. And in order to accompany that, all student graduates will enter into the north side of Richmond High, which is our student parking lot anyways, and they're going to come through and be checked in by their academy teachers who they know. And they will stage in our new auxiliary gym, which has enough space to accompany them. And about average, it'll be about a hundred students per cohort. So three times three graduations, about three hundred graduates we are anticipating. Students enter in the north side and are checked in, make sure there's masks, make sure there's sanitation and temperatures read. Parents are going to park in the south parking lot entrance, which is larger. Parents are going to have three checkpoints that we're going to be running, each one with a teacher, a C S O. And an office clerk that will then be checking in families using a guest list created on the Google pages. So that way we're aware of which folks are coming in and which which group that they're meeting with. So with those three check ins, we're hoping to get folks in and out at a relatively quick space. We'll have the stadium on the field along with our chairs set up on the field. And our stadium seating will be, we will accompany all of our families. We will have C S Os and teachers that will be working in the stands to make sure and enforcing social distancing guidelines. We are requesting that we have R P D. To assist with traffic only in the front to make sure that Twenty Third Street and Maricopa are not too busy over there. We will need C S Os in the parking lot and admin, both for the start and the ending of each graduation ceremony. We'll make sure C S Os are at the checkpoints. We have four four total and also in the stands. Graduates will be expected to come an hour and a half early. That's pretty typical for graduations because anything that can go wrong will. And we want to make sure that they have time to make any kind of corrections they may need. We're also getting our stadium cleaned. And we're going to put the dots, the ones that are used in our in-person instruction at this time on the desk. We're going to put the dots onto the stadium seating to indicate where families are to sit to maintain social distancing. And we'll have our dignitaries and admin on stage at the start of graduation. We will have the senior graduates exit the auxiliary gym and come through the tunnel of our stadium out onto the field where they'll be seated there. And and then at the end, everyone will be able to exit, will open up all exits. This schedule also allows for the two hour window in between each ceremony that is required by the C D C. Please let us know if you have any questions and Mr. DeLeone, anything to add?
Yep, the only thing we have left to add is we're going to ask the students, the seniors are graduating to R S B P. To make sure that we have the right capacity. And if because of COVID less seniors feel comfortable coming, that will give greater ability for tickets to be passed out or for more family members to come in, no tickets. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. DeLeone and Mr. Hillier. We really appreciate you providing three ceremonies in order to accommodate your students and families. All right.
So we do now have Hercules also here as well as Kennedy is here too.
Thank you. We'll loop back to Hercules at the end of this presentation. So right now we are moving on to Kennedy High School on June tenth. Mr. Scott.
Good afternoon, colleagues and board members and Mr. Wode and Dr. Shin Julio. Just want to share a, just want to share our plan for commencement. This will be June tenth. And so that as you may notice, the time is in that solidify yet and then we explain to you why momentarily. So just looking at a few logistics, in terms of thirty three percent seating. I is approximately seven ninety-two. And so where we are now, we have approximately a hundred and fifty graduates. And so we're kind of planning for either one to two graduations. And and we see the seating capacity and I think the where we are now is we're still collecting feedback from students and families. And we thought that this was pretty much clear in conversations and early dialogue. But as it turned out, we were roughly around fifty fifty with students in terms of one graduation or two. So that determines for us, that determines our time on June tenth, and we should have that solidified by by this evening. And so the, so we actually went through for stakeholder input. And based on these questions first, we wanted to know the students want to, if families want to have the drive through or the more traditional ceremony. And the majority of our students said the traditional ceremony. And now the question has become, do we want one graduation? Where we roughly each graduate will have two tickets? Or would we prefer two separate graduations where each participant or each graduate will receive four tickets? And so this number, this number has been changing. And so we're we're close to fifty fifty at this point. The deadline for this was earlier, but you know, some of our students are still getting it in. So we want to honor those students and their voices and we want them to be heard. All right, and so for this ceremony, we have approximately a hundred and fifty students and thirty staff will participate in the program. And right now, we are slated to have a traditional ceremony, complete with a processional speeches, music, photos and a recessional. At the end of the ceremony, students will recess off off the field and meet families. And they'll be encouraged at our pre-graduation conversations as well as on that date not to linger for social distancing and safety reasons. And the C S Os administrators and staff will monitor the campus during exit process for graduates who choose to kind of take pictures and in specific places on campus. So we certainly kind of be there to kind of monitor that process. And I ask, and so for our entering and exit process, I'm going to ask Mr. Brooks if you will mind going over this process.
Hello, everyone. So we'll have two entrances and two exits to campus. Cars will come in off Burke and off South Forty Fifth. We'll have parking on the back, the back lots on both sides of the stadium. Graduates will be led off to the end of the gym. We use that as a staging area. And then the gates will be closed between the two lots during the procession to the field. Exit should be through the same exits that they came into. Questions? I've got maps if you'd like them.
Would you like to review the state safety protocol really quickly?
Yeah, I can take care of that. And so, so as relation to the safety protocol, all participants will leave personal belongings at home. We had conversations around students asking about locker use and those sorts of things. So we encourage all students to leave everything at home so we won't have to lock anything up for students as well as all the participants and guests. They all will be required to complete the pre-screening health check. As as well as we will continue to drive the six feet social distance throughout the entire ceremony. All guests will wear masks as well as sanitize prior to coming into the the field. And we'll also have sanitation stations throughout. As students go into the bleachers, there'll be a sanitizer station near the restroom area. There'd be a sanitizer station. So throughout throughout the area, we will have sanitizer stations for for our families and our students and staff. We utilize seating markers and so which will encourage student, encourage families as to where to sit in terms of to make sure that we're on an appropriate distancing for for the ceremonies. And so right now, we have eleven C S Os. Four would be at the gates. Then we have also C S Os collecting tickets. Then we have two C S Os monitoring stadium seating. Then we have C S Os monitoring the bathroom areas as needed. As well as a C S O kind of road will be kind of a rover and replacing as needed other C S Os. And so we're right now, we're slated at ten teachers and counselors and administrators, in addition, and three administrators to kind of help with staging areas, student preparation, and it kind of help, you know, ushering and those other things that will be needed for this process. As well as we will also have have a stage where admin and and other of the dignitaries will be on stage for the ceremony. Ask you any questions that the board may have.
I'm sure we'll engage in Q and A at the end of all presentations. Thank you so much, Mr. Scott and Mr. Brooks. All right, next we have Vista High School on June eleventh. Principal Edith Jordan McCormick, are you here?
I'm here. Good afternoon, Trustee Christian and Trustee Smith Folds. Dr. Shin, Dr. Wold, esteemed colleagues, we are going to be having our graduation at the Vista Hills Complex. We are super excited about this, the pandemic positive that came out of out of this for us during the drive through ceremony. We enjoyed hosting it at Vista, although we appreciated being a part of the alternative schools graduation for prior years. It is not a secret that we don't fit that school, we don't fit that in terms of being an alternative school. We're not a continuation. We are a choice school. So we are super excited to continue with our new credit, new tradition of celebrating at the Vista Hills Complex. The other thing we're excited to do is you can see our former graduate there, our school colors are purple and white. We have a mask that everybody wear the tigers. And so we have switched over for our graduates to be graduating in royal purple. So we're super excited about that. Right now we have approximately forty-four graduates. I'm not sure all will be ready to walk. So we're going to be hosting a very small graduation. We're waiting for the district to assess either the front parking lot on Barnard. Or our preference would be the back parking lot where we park for Vista High School on the Parker Street area where we'll close that gate off. And the goal would be for every graduate to be able to have at least four people in the back parking lot area. We think we can appropriately socially distance up to a hundred and twenty guests with no problem along with the graduates and still be able to, I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I hope that there's not bad news about a stage. I really want a stage. So we're going to set up a stage back there, our cute little balloon arch and our little this the swag bags. We do plan on having a traditional graduation in terms of the kids being able to do grad pictures. We'll have a light keynote and we're also going to take this opportunity to celebrate our four teachers that retired at the end of twenty twenty, who combined had spent over sixty years as a team at Vista High School. So we are super excited about not only celebrating them, but celebrating our students. Oh, for needs, I think I'd like at least two C S Os. That's and really one would be fine, but two would be helpful. Just in terms of being able to clear out that parking lot on the day, we'd like someone at the Barnard gate to help take tickets and take temperatures. In terms of safety protocols, once the back area is assessed, we plan on setting up chairs and like family pods. And I do want to use either some of my staff or some younger students to kind of help seat people to kind of keep us. I don't, I don't want there to be any kind of crowds. So we want to make sure that we keep people socially distanced the entire time. We will provide hand sanitizer. Everybody will obviously have to be masked. And that's it. It's going to be a quick one and done. I don't think the ceremony will last longer than an hour. And because Gateway to College is going to be using our same setup, our goal is to be done by twelve. We will have it all nice and cleaned up and then they will load in at two o'clock.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have El Cerrito High School, June eleventh, Principal Crespo.
Good afternoon, board members and district office staff and my fellow high school principals. Happy Monday. So right now we're looking at having our our graduation. It's going to be the first time ever that we've had it on our football field. Time is to be determined because we're still working on whether it should be an earlier morning or afternoon, like four to seven. So we'll see where we get back with that kind of information. So we conducted three polls of our seniors and they have voted overwhelmingly, seventy-nine percent of them that they would prefer an in-person graduation through instead of a drive through. Even though if they have a drive through graduation, they can invite more family members. We made it very, very clear. This means only two guests per, you know, graduate. And so they understand that. So you'll see that they chose one. And then they also voted to have the honor grad sit in alphabetical order this year. It is the first time that we're ever doing anything on the field, so they're trying to start new traditions. Next slide, please. This is the ceremony, so we're going to, we need a lot of staff is is my goal here. Because it's the first time that we're ever doing this on the football field and that it's a huge field. We're also asking for S R O. Support, ideally if we could get two so that one could be in the front, what could be in the back. We believe we're going to need two custodians to be able to keep the bathrooms constantly clean. And there's two bathrooms that will be open, so they might be rotating back and forth to those and they're big bathrooms. We ask for approximately twenty teachers so that they can be split up. They're, you know, the ones that are with the seniors when they're getting ready in order to come in will then be able to monitor them while they're sitting down. And we have approximately eleven C S Os. And we want four to be at the very, very front gate that's near the cow gates. Because we're going to do two lines, two to three lines of people coming in. Well, we'll just check their temperature and be able to see if they have their guest passes and they'll come on in. And admin will be up there supporting as well. Next slide, please. And safety, pretty much what everybody else has said, students will have their masks on. They will be able to take their masks off when they're going to go up and receive their diploma. So they can take one of their two pictures. There'll be one up on the stage, one as they're exiting the stage. Families, again, will be limited to two. I was asked, and I would like some clarification, if you have a baby, like some parents might have babies that are under two, would they count or not? That's something that had come up. Of course, our faculty will also be wearing their face masks. We're going to provide hand sanitizer. And then graduates must be able to fill out their COVID waiver form before we go to practice. We've, we're not sure about practice if it's going to be Wednesday or Thursday because a lot of our students are taking E P. Exams and originally the A P Calc A B B C is on Wednesday. So we're trying to see what other dates might fit with the majority of our seniors for practice. I believe the next paper, I think that's about all that I have on there.
All right.
Nice, quick fast. It'll be about an hour and a half graduation.
Nice, thank you so much. Okay, oh, so we're at the end, which is, this means we're going back to Hercules High School since we have. And Dr. Shin, you do see Ms. Preston's hand, correct? No, I don't see anybody's hands right now. Can we wait till?
We have the African American one to also present at the end of this too.
Okay. Okay, here we are. Is it Mr. Newsom or are you here for on behalf of her?
I am here.
Oh, Dr. Manzing, thank you.
Fullsome, California. I'm currently on a WASC visit and I got in the meeting. So sorry for that, but doing a little double and glad to be a part of this graduation presentation to the Board of Trustees, District Admin, Fellow High School Principal, Colleagues. Very happy to present that Hercules High School will be proposing their graduation to be on June third, eleven A M. Nowhere else but the Titan Field. That's where we've done it and that's where we'd like to do it and it's been fabulous. So this is what we are proposing. So we reached out to our parents and to our students. And I I gave them three options, one hundred percent virtual, a drive through like we did last year, which was very satisfactory. And I got a lot of praise, even from the media, we were on T V and the in-stadium graduation. So this was early polling and out of the hundred students that responded, the poll is still open. Ninety-four percent in favor of a stadium graduation. And of the forty-two parents that responded, ninety-five percent voted in favor of the stadium graduation. And I believe that all the numbers, no matter how many we get, will still be in the nineties because that's that's just tradition for Hercules High School to do their graduation on the stadium. And the parents really don't want to do. And the parents really don't want to do a drive-through from what I've heard because they've done that before and they really want to have this last opportunity to be seated with their class for the class of twenty twenty-one. Next slide. So our plan is to, of course, keeping them socially distanced. We made a grid of the football field. We can seat about two hundred and twenty-five chairs on the stadium, uh, rows all the way from the ten yard line, past the fifty, fifty yard line to the opposing forty yard line. So we're going to be covering a lot of field. Uh, we have the stage, we have our, our seating marked out already for social distancing. Uh, we will have a parade from vehicle parade that they will go through. They'll enter through the admin building. And if you're familiar with Hercules Campus, we're about a two mile stretch all the way from the football field to the elementary. Uh, so we will start them right in the middle. We will have several checkpoints for vehicles to come through. All the other gates will be locked. There will be nobody walking up any of the hills to the stadium. They'll wa- they'll drive through one vehicle per graduate, uh, two occupants as is in the vehicle. They will all be checked at several, uh, checkpoints. First through the middle brown gate, then through the service road, through the back by the portables, then by the softball field where they will be directed to park in, uh, various places. The individuals will be required to wear a mask. Once they exit the car, they'll walk onto the field. The parents will walk in the stadium and the graduates will be walking to assigned seating. Uh, we normally do have our honor grads in assigned seating. And they are called up. We'll have our, we have two valedictorians this year, uh, both with four point six two four GPAs. Uh, tremendous tie. And then our salutatorian is like a four point five nine eight. So like, wow, okay. So that's really close race. Uh, met with all three of them. They're very excited to address their class. Uh, two of them are deciding to do a dual type presentation. So we're excited. We'll have our typical twelve, uh, international languages that are welcome to the families in various languages. So we are excited to be back on the field and we hope that we will be allowed to. Uh, there will, uh, students will be called up by, by the name with the three by five card that they're giving the counselors be read. We'll, we'll use the same thing. They will walk up across the stage. A diploma case will be waiting on a stool. They will pick up their, their, uh, diploma. There will not be any, uh, physical contact. We have grad images and life touch photographers that will be there set up. The graduate will turn around, face camera, uh, give a big smile with their diploma cover and they'll walk down the ramp and they'll, uh, stand until they're all seated. Next slide. So our precautions, I think I kind of went through this already. The vehicles, it's very secure, one access point. Uh, all vehicles, no, uh, pedestrians or no walking into the field. Uh, we will have several checkpoints. Cars will be assigned parking. Students will walk into, graduates will walk into the stadium. All individuals will have to have their mask appropriately worn. All entries will have hand sanitizers and masks available for anybody that slipped through. Uh, parents will be asked to pre, uh, pre-screen through a survey on if they've had any symptoms or if they've been in contact with anyone with COVID in recent days. Um, families will not be encouraged to, will be encouraged to linger, not linger after the ceremony. We'll try to keep them separate and have them vacate. So on entry, we're going to have one access. On exit, we're going to open up all the gates to allow all families to exit any way that they can. Uh, we plan on having our CSOs there. Uh, we are well-trained and well, uh, guided through the, the service road. So there's really no other way for the parents to go once they enter campus. And if any questions you have, I'd be more than happy to answer.
All right. Thank you so much for joining us, Dr. Mancing. We appreciate you doing double duty today. Um, and due to the fact that Mr. McGee did not respond to my, um, message about, um, working collaborative presentation. I'm not sure what Ms. Preston has.
She has it. Um, I just found out. So we'll go ahead and let her share her screen. We just didn't get it added in in time. So it's synced. So we do have one more. So.
So Ms. Shen, I apologize for not getting back to you in a timely manner, but Mr. Frankel and I have been working all weekend on a plan. I've been collaborating with Mr. McGee and, uh, speaking with Mr. Frankel. And we last spoke, spoke this morning at eight fifteen or eight forty, uh, eight thirty this morning. So, um, what has been, um, happening with OASIA and the black graduation is the safety concern first of all. And, um, because of, uh, we don't have a campus or facility has been really difficult. But Mr. Frankel did say, uh, Hercules could be available and we looked at, uh, the date that we looked at for the weekend. He called me back and said it wouldn't work. So we're keeping our original date of June seventh at eleven o'clock and will, um, graciously ask if Hercules will allow us to use their facility. Everything works out well. If we could keep our same date in time, but just go to Hercules. It's the numbers that are, it's the numbers that, that we have to worry with. We have three hundred and forty-two African-American graduates. Uh, we have sent out a letter this week, this morning to ask who desires to participate with information. In addition to that, we're going to follow all the protocols that Hercules has put in place to be, um, less cumbersome on them. But we will follow their exact protocols for cars coming in. In the letter, we have mandated it will be one student, two parents only. Because if all three hundred come, that would be nine hundred people anyway. So we made mandated one student, two parents in the same car, one car. Okay. We were very clear with that. We were clear with the parents registering ahead of time. We were clear that they must follow COVID procedures. But I have worked with OASIA and the, um, the other Office of African-American Achievement. And so let me see if I can get my camera turned around. Um, we're making a packet for each African-American, uh, twelfth grader graduate. And it will include an OASIA mask, an authentic kente cloth and a kente tassel. And my count, the two counselors that are with OASIA at this time, once the packets start together, we plan to go to the schools and give the students a time they can come and pick up their, um, African-American, uh, student achievement certificate, uh, kente cloth, tassel and mask. And they can wear that for the graduate, for their regular graduation and the African-American graduation. Okay. Uh, here, let me see if I can get the, the, okay. Can you see that? That will be in the packet for each school. We're hoping that within a two-hour window, uh, each, um, family will come and pick up this lovely packet. And we hope there's not maybe but a few left if they come late or something that the office managers might just give them out. Cause we'll put the names on them. We'll put names on them and have a check-off sheet, which will be very easy. So we're expecting, we want, we intend to get Middle College theirs ahead of time so that they'll have them. And, um, in, and in light of them picking up anything, um, one of the things I read online that they could do when they come up to the podium is take their African tassel and move it over and then turn for their picture. Okay. And these are keepsakes. These are authentic pieces and they are keepsakes that the parents, I think, will, will, um, like. What we also did was I listened very closely at every counselor's meeting, graduation meeting and took notes. And I used the survey results from each school to figure out what the children wanted. Plus there are about four schools that keep calling me to want to know when is African-American graduation. Parents are calling, so it is, they want a stadium graduation from the reasons, from the, the data that I have received. They want a stadium graduation. They want to see their children walk across the stage. Um, if, um, uh, Summer will send me the slides. I'll put this on a slide and get it right back to you to put into, um, to cut into the presentation. I just, with me trying to work out logistics and all, I wasn't able to put it into the slide presentation, but I'll get you your four slides within the next, within twenty-four hours. Any other questions?
And so before we go to questions, we have one last person here. I think he's still here. I'm not. Actually, he might have already had to go. So David Johnston is working on all of these different facilities being used at basically the same time. And in the case of Hercules being used multiple times. We're working to try to rent, um, stages and those pieces. We should have the final determination that we can get it all done because we don't have that much in stock to be able to handle this level. And on the fields, we do need to get some sort of covering over the fields to protect those. So there is going, this is, as you can see, the biggest thing we've ever done, kind of like Summer again. There's additional costs, there's additional logistics that you can tell just by the fact that it took us an hour just to present the plans, that there is an enormous amount of work being done by our site leaders to try to make this one last thing happen for our, our principals. And was there anything else to finish up or are we at questions?
I think we're at questions. We're done with the presentation.
The Brady Bunch times five on your panels here, trustees.
Okay. I want to thank everyone for giving the presentation concerning the graduation. And at this time we'll go to the questions and, uh, Trustee Smith Folds.
Hi, everyone. So, um, Dr. Shen, you were right. You're back up to an A. Good job. Cause you started out at a C. It was a little rough. But that's a, you, it's an A. Everybody's presentation you did very, very well. I'm, I'm highly impressed. I do have a couple of questions. Um, uh, let's see. So for Greenwood, how many students do you think you're graduating? I didn't get a number.
No, I got my fingers crossed and, uh, we're looking at between eighty and ninety.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And then, um, the El Cerrito, how many graduates do you think you're going to have?
About three sixty-five.
Okay. And then Hercules High School, how many graduates do you have?
Right now we're two fifteen, uh, but we have some, uh, in-betweeners that we hope that we could get up to two twenty-five.
Okay. And then, um, Deanna, how many, how many did you have graduating?
Uh, three hundred for sure. And same, we have about ten to fifteen. We're dragging along with us.
Okay, perfect. And then Adult Ed, were you talking about a flat bed like you use at homecoming? You know, at homecoming, you have the flat bed and then the, the parades, like the homecoming stuff on the side of it. Were you talking about something like that? Cause that could be very pretty. Like that could actually be very, very pretty. I'm just asking. I, I want you to have a stage. Like I would like you to have a stage. I know Vista really wants a stage, but I'm just trying to figure out if not, are you talking about that kind of flat bed?
Thank you, trustee. Uh, somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but, um, I, I grew up on a farm and I'm not opposed to standing up on a flatbed truck. But, um, and, but I don't know how we get people up there. And I, I can say that none of our graduates have mobility issues that would prevent them from ascending stairs. So our, I, I, we're lucky in that we don't need a ramp. Otherwise, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I thought you were serious, but yeah, you know, I like a flatbed.
I, I would be serious if I couldn't find something, cause I would like to have something that's elevated. So again, if there, I don't want vehicles blocking, inhibiting people's view or they will get out of their cars.
Okay, that's perfect. Cause I'm from the south and I, you know, I can do a good parade flute. Um, Dr. Mancing, when you were talking about your dual presentation, are they going to be kind of, if they're doing a dual presentation, are they still going to be separated on the stage or they're going to be closer together for the mic? Are you going to have two mics? You said that the, the two kids are going to do a dual presentation, two valedictorians and the salutatorian. You're muted, Dr. Mancing.
Yes. So we usually have two microphones on each side. So they would be on the opposing sides where the speakers are. So they would be addressing from, uh, ten feet.
Okay, perfect. And then I just have some general questions. Um, Dr. Wold, they're going to be cleaning between speeches. That's part of the protocol. Like you have a speech, there's going to be a cleaning between the speech or like just a spray down of the microphone or something. Have we thought about that?
So we will be working, um, as we get all of the setups, we'll make sure that any necessary, um, rags or anything that needs to be wiping down is available at each of the podiums.
Okay. And then, um, have principals thought about balloons, horns, et cetera, on the field? Because you know that deals with people being able to hear the next graduate's name being announced. Have you guys thought about that? Are you allowing the horns and the balloons and the, all of that stuff on the field? You don't have to answer. I'm just kind of putting it out there like that's a question.
Usually part of our regular graduation, um, whether it be indoors or outdoors.
Okay. So it's the same, same kind of protocol that you're going to have? Okay. And then if you're having it outside, is there going to be a picture line? Like are parents going to be able to come up just so far to take a picture? Do they need to remain seated? Everybody thinking in their head, they need to remain seated.
Remain. So we usually have, um, a professional photographer there that takes a photo of the student on the stage and on the other side. So that's why we're asking family photos to wait.
And our, our protocol, we've always kept the families in the stands and we have monitors to keep the families in the stands. We have the professional photographers. And then at the end, we always encourage our students and families to meet in a certain location. This is when we have twenty-eight hundred to three thousand on the field. But then we do the same thing that we would direct the kids to go to their families directly and then exit the field.
Okay, perfect. And Deanna, are you doing three feet or six feet? I didn't hear, you said yours didn't say specifically. Are you doing three feet or six feet spacing?
Um, we're probably going to have to do three feet spacing with masking to fit everyone. Um, but we will spread out as much as we can.
Okay. And if, is anybody having their band show up? You know, Hercules, Hercules, uh, Dr. Mancing, you know how you had the band show up? Are, is anybody planning to have their band show up or you?
E C is El Cerrito.
El Cerrito.
We're having band and dance.
Okay. Um,
Maybe Richmond High too.
Maybe Richmond High, okay.
If we are allowed to, our orchestra would love to continue to perform for the graduation.
Okay. Um, Dr. Wold, so I would like you to kind of talk to admin about that and make a consistent, like make it, make it, if one can do it, all can do it or.
Yeah, it, it all comes down to the spacing. So each school, um, our team will work with them on their plans.
And then everybody's going to have their bathrooms open. I know that I heard El Cerrito has a plan for their bathrooms. Everybody's going to have some kind of bathroom facility open for their graduates and families. And they have all those things and that.
And so that means we will have to have some custodians on site for that day as well. And we expect that this will be a extra time card week.
Okay. I do like the idea. Someone spoke to having sanitation stations in the bleachers. I like that idea. I think that that's like portable sanitation station, stations and bleachers. I thought that was, be good. Um, I, I do want to speak to the question about breastfeeding babies and lap babies. Like are the breastfeeding babies and the lap babies or siblings with special needs, are they counted in the number? Like if I'm a mom just gave birth two weeks ago, um, the baby can come with me and not be a per- uh, I don't want to say not be a person, but not be counted, correct? Like they cannot be counted. What about a lap baby? Is a lap baby counted or is a lap, a baby that sits on your lap? Like, you know, four and under. Is a lap baby counted or do you have to have, does that person have to have babysitting? Can anybody speak to that?
So we will get.
Airplanes, it's, sorry, Dr. Wold, I just know it's two or under, um, in airplanes. So I don't know if that would be a guidance or not.
That's likely the way we're going to follow. We have to go back and honestly, I hadn't read the most recent CDPH outdoor guidelines as it pertains to that aspect. But common sense, when you're dealing with social distancing, common sense should prevail. And just like the airplane law is that you can't have that lap baby. We would certainly want to be able to support what we can. But this, you have to be very specific in that because all of a sudden the lap baby becomes five years old. And that's not going to work as it plays out. So we'll, we'll have to get some very specific guidelines and we'll get that out the next day.
Yeah. So be very, cause my youngest kid, she looks like she's sixteen almost, but she looked like she was a past, we're a twelve-year-old. And you know, when the movie was expensive, we slid in. Go ahead, you're going to be twelve.
Yeah, so.
But like, so it, it, it varies. And my middle kid, she looks like she's twenty-one and she's twelve. So you know what I mean? So just, I like the idea of being very specific, but also very understanding that, you know, kids grow differently and they, they look differently with their heights and stuff. Um, my final question is, this is great for our seniors. I think you guys did an excellent job. Uh, Dr. Wold, have you thought about eighth grade and kindergarten? Cause I know those questions are coming. Kindergarten promotion is going to be coming as a question and eighth grade is going to be coming as a question. People are going to want to use high school facilities. Like what's happening with that?
So unfortunately, pulling this off is a really big lift for this organization. To be able to do, we don't have the facilities or the capacity of staffing to pull off those other two. So we had to make a choice. And it's kind of like you, you honor longevity, you honor folks that have been in the system. Graduation is literally this single one outcome that we're about. Graduation is literally this single one outcome that we're evaluated by. There's nothing else. If you really say what is school, this is our final report card. So we're putting our efforts there. We understand that that may be a challenging statement. And there's going to be some frustration for our kindergarten families in our eighth grade. But again, we are in business to graduate students. We can't do everything. We had to do one thing and this was the one we put our efforts to.
Okay, thank you so much. And trustee Christian, those are all of my questions. Everything else is a comment.
And I see one hand up before we go. I'm not sure from, um, Principal Crespo.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm wondering, um, if there's gonna be a time for us to ask, you know, for big asks. Um, like, you know, a stage or anything like that, um, because that's like big money and, you know, I don't know how to get support for that.
Principal Crespo, ask in front of us. I love big ask. I love.
So I'll answer that one for you. Uh, David Johnson had to step away. He's working with some outside support vendors to see what is the capacity even in other companies. How many stages can we get? When can we get them? And so work directly with Julio and Ann with those requests. David is also part of that. Vince, um, Vincent Lewis, their biggest concern was the covering of the fields. Because we have to be, putting chairs on fields is very problematic. And so we're gonna have to spend a little more money than we normally would to protect our fields to do this. And so continue to connect with Julio and Ann. They should know in the next day or two, how many stages we can get. There and where they can get installed. Um, and we'll get that done because we just don't have enough people. We're used to, you go to the auditorium, you have one location, everyone goes in and out, boom, done. That's one buy. This is very, very different than the way we've done it in the past. So.
And I'll tell you, Mr. Franco, Mr. Franco was on our campus today helping with the new audio system that we need. Because if you've ever been to a football game at EC, the speakers just suck. And so we wouldn't be able to hear kids' names. And the other thing that we're telling our students or our graduates, and I hope this is okay, is no kitty heels. Because that's what's really gonna end, that's what messes up your, um, you know, your, your turf. And so we're gonna say that and I want to be, just make sure that if there's pushback on it, that nobody says, oh, okay, let them. Because they were really ruining our, our beautiful fields.
Yeah, that, that is a big deal. And so we are gonna unfortunately have to put some very strict protocols in place.
And that.
What kind of heels did you say?
You know those little kitty heels, like the little sharp pointy ones and you have, you have a pair on right now? No, I, because I, I don't have mine on right now either, but sorry. Summer anyway.
I mean, I think at the end of the day, you know, when you go to a wedding in the summer and they say this is on grass. And then you know that you have to wear shoes that you can walk in, the girls don't want to fall on their face. So I think we just tell them, don't wear those shoes, you'll fall down.
Wedges or whatever, yeah, that's.
But be very clear with them because they like to get cute. And so let. You will get stuck in the grass or you will fall or you will mess up really nicely. So like this, they can keep them with them maybe or like have their mom keep them. So when they take their pictures, they look different. But no one's gonna see your feet when you're walking, like no one's gonna pay attention to it, you know? So I think being very specific would be great.
Trustee Bowles, I just have one thing to say that the packets we're giving out for the seniors. Every senior will get the packaging because they may graduate in the summer. So just every senior that's a twelfth grader. Okay, we'll get the kente cloth this year, uh, with a certificate of perseverance. Okay? So just letting the schools know that we'll send enough for every senior. Okay?
For that, that's awesome. I do, that made me have another question. Trustee Christian, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
What does summer graduation look like? Where do kids graduate in the summer? Is that a central location that the district has or how does that happen?
We haven't even thought of, we haven't finished this one yet.
Tony Wool, y'all was at A, he was sitting at an A. Now it is down to like, I'll give you a solid B.
Because it's. We'll, we'll definitely have that for you though.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Christian, that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you trustee Smith Foles. Um, and, and the question that, you know, I have. You know, and it's basically pertaining, you know, to going back to safety. Um, I just, you know, you know, I heard everybody mentioned how many safety officers they're gonna have. Um, we want to make sure. That we have the adequate safety staff aboard, um, because we don't have the SROs anymore. Um, and I, last I talked to Michael Booker. Um, and it's kind of a little difficult and some of the, uh, departments. Really don't want to kind of assist us in a way now. So, so really all the CSOs is gonna have to be on deck. And I see, and I see Charles Johnson has came, has come into the meeting. Um, but that's one of the things we got to make sure. And just speaking from. A former CSO myself and many graduations I've worked over through the years. Uh, to know how graduations can become and how stuff can get out, you know, out of control. And even when we had it at the Richmond Auditorium, uh, and issues broke out, fights broke out, different little issues. Um, I could just go on and on, but, um. If you got five CSOs, you need ten CSOs or eleven CSOs. So, and Mr. Johnson, I want all the CSOs to be on deck, ready to work. So we can make sure that every site, every graduation is covered. For the safety of our students and people and everybody that's gonna be attending the graduation.
Absolutely. I've been taking notes on everybody and, uh, we're gonna have everything covered. The entrances, bathrooms, stage, parking lots, uh, temperature checks, front, uh, covering, uh, pit lines. The fields, traffic, uh, leaving, we'll be providing face masks when needed. Instead of, you know, giving people a hard time, we just pass them a face mask, they don't have one. So, uh, we're, we're prepared and, and they know, they know what to do. And we're gonna be going over, uh, protocols before we even, uh, go into that. I'll be staffing that within the next, uh, next week. I'll be staffing the, all the events. Uh, everybody will have, uh, ten, well, from what I'm hearing, eleven plus at each site. So, and again, it depends on the site and the need, uh, for traffic and different things like that. But it's looking good. We got it covered.
And then Michael Booker and I also, while we are having some challenging relationships. Still with the chiefs, we're not done yet with those conversations. And so we're looking at what additional outside support that aren't our own employees. We can bring in to support and make these safe. So while some of the feedback isn't necessarily exactly what we'd hope. I'm still optimistic that we can move in a positive direction to get additional support.
Okay, and so, um, so, so can you, like, give us a report back, Mr. Johnson? On how many, um, CSOs are gonna be at the different graduations, you know, pertaining on. Um, the, well, put it this way, you know, El Cerrito is gonna draw a lot of students, I mean, a lot of people. You know, Kennedy High School is gonna draw a lot of people, you know, um, Deanna is gonna draw people. Hercules is gonna draw people, Pinot Valley is gonna draw. So we know our bigger schools is gonna require. Um, all hands on deck.
Yes, yeah, we may have as many as fifteen to twenty CSOs at those thick ones, those larger, uh. Events. Not a problem.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Wool, is, uh, there anything else that we need to add to this or?
So if there's no other questions, we'll ask if there's any public comment. If any of the attendees do have a question, they can raise their hand right now and we'll call on them. And I see public comment from within, so it's sort of, um, opposite. So Patty, um, you could go first.
I don't know if there's a, a pub, public out there who wants to ask a question. I have, uh, two questions. What, by when do you think we'll know how many staff members we can hire? In years past, we've been given approximately thirty, um, staff members that we can then let them know that we're doing this and they can sign up. Um, the sooner obviously the better. So we could know how many.
Now, start now, get your staffing done.
Okay.
This is a priority this year to do something for our outgoing seniors that have a lost year. So we're going to overspend to do this for our students. This year, using one-time CARES Act funds, so it's not going to, but it, it. To the best of our ability, that's the plan.
And Feeny, you're graduating how many weeks from now? Right, the twenty-second?
The twenty-second, yeah. So we definitely need to coordinate. I just wanted to wait until after this meeting. Uh, but can we connect with everybody, Mr. Johnson, Dr. Shen, like, I'm getting nervous here.
And the reason I bring that up, not to put, um, middle college on the spot, is because we don't have a stage and, and sound system. So just, you know, just, just putting that out there to kind of not make it seem too pressureful.
I met with the electronic department today and they're gonna be, they're gonna be able to support us in all of that.
Thank you so much Franco.
The first one that we brought up and yes, we will be able to cover yours.
That's the sound system, but we don't know about the stage.
We're already working, David and I and the rest of you, we're working on making sure that we get one, that, or everyone.
Then I'm gonna go on vacation now, bye.
I'm also prepared just for the trustees. Um, I've actually, in my previous world. We did do outdoor graduations at multiple locations in Santa Ana. And where we shared facilities, we ended up having to do some twenty-four hour security. If we're gonna use the same setup for several years. So depending on what we end up with, that's another thing that we may need to provide some additional. Just watching over the things that are set up out there on those fields.
And, and it, it already came up to, uh, Dr. Wool, uh, about, we are gonna need some.
So I'm, I'm prepared that that is part of the logistics of running this type of graduation. And I'm familiar with that from my old life.
Trustee Christian, are we gonna do comments? Because I'm just busting at the seams.
Yes, yeah, we're gonna do comments.
Is there any way to support, well, this is kind of question comment. Dr. Wool, is there any way to support all schools doing a live streaming? I love that idea. Is there any way to support the schools? So not to put, not, not to put anything extra on the school sites. But is there any way the district can support schools doing live streaming? That was a great idea.
So Franco is, um, looking into it, Bobby Jordan is looking into it. We did a couple where we hired someone to do a couple of the games. And Bobby's here, so hold on, Bobby's gonna, I'm gonna let him unmute. Bobby, go ahead.
Uh, good evening trustees and principals. Um, the principals know this. In years past, the normal times, uh, the district's communications department has live streamed the graduations via Facebook. Um, so that is still an option. We just, my team, Rachelle and I just need to figure out some of the details. And, um, um, some of the logistics of, of how it's gonna work. So it, it's on the table, we're trying to figure it out.
Perfect, thank you. Um, my other comment is if you're having your outside, uh. If you're having your outside. Graduation at Hercules, wear layers. Our Hercules gets really different weather up on the top of the graduation hill. So just make sure that you tell your families to wear layers because sometimes it's freezing cold, sometimes we, it's burning hot. So just, that's just a, just a little Hercules aside thing, like please wear layers because it's gonna be, the weather is kind of, uh, goofy. Um, I do want to make sure, uh, Mr. Franco, that everything's ready for middle college. I don't want them to get the short end of the stick because they're going first. You know what I mean? Like I don't want, I want them to have everything that they need to and the stage and the equipment and all the access. Dr. Wool, I heard you say that we have one-time money that we can spend. I love that. Please email your wants and needs to Dr. Wool because we should be able to supply it for you. Do not, do not, don't, um, limit yourself because you're trying to buy some balloons. Dr. Wool did it for you. Dr. Wool, get these people some balloons and some, like some tassels and lovely things that they need because it is a memory. And I love, uh, I love graduation and please don't sit under a waterfall and be thirsty. If we have the one-time funds, please put it out there for your students. Please have every safety protocol in place. Because that's very, very important. And Dr. Wool, what about my last question? Are we thinking about testing seniors before graduation? COVID testing them before graduation? Have we put that in mind? Have we thought about what that would look like? Are we gonna test staff that's gonna be participating before, uh, graduation ceremonies? Have we thought about any of that?
So our testing protocols are the in-person individuals, both students and, um, staff. We had not looked at the logistics of doing that type of testing. Because the likelihood is if they're staying six foot apart outside, you're not going to have that close. Um, connection that would trigger the need for that. And since we are masked based on current CDPH guidelines, that wouldn't necessarily be a requirement. Anyone that's been in person will have been tested before that event as well.
So the teach, what about the teacher volunteers that are coming in? Like, will those, will those teachers have to be vaccinated if they volunteer to participate in or?
For this singular event, they would not need to have done that to teach, they did. So anyone that's teaching right now, but same exact scenario here. If they're coming for a one-time event and we're keeping social distancing and we're not having close contact. They would still be able to support. And we don't want to take away that favorite twelfth grade teacher. That for whatever reason hasn't been able to get vaccinated yet or something, but has had a connection with these kids for four years. And they want to participate. We certainly want them to have that connection together.
Okay, so my comment would be to have you, uh, in your budget, just be able to, uh, have space. In case people do want to get tested, make it an option. In case, uh, students want to or teachers or whoever volunteering wants. So I think it should be an option on the table, a quick turnaround. Um, if they're rehearsing inside or being housed inside, please make sure those facilities have the proper ventilation. Like if they're being housed in the gym and then they march out to the field or whatever that is, if they're rehearsing inside. Make sure that there's proper ventilation in there and everyone still during rehearsals wears, wear their mask. Um, trustee Christian, I think that I am finished. Overall grade, B plus.
All right, all right, all right. Thank you, thank you trustee, trustee, uh, Smith Foles. And, um, and only comment I have is that every, uh, I just wanted to say to everybody, you have done a wonderful, wonderful job. And, um, preparing for graduation and, um, uh, everything looks good. And, um, I only think I did just say, you know, for Mr. Johnson, just to make sure. That the CSOs are gonna be at the locations and making sure that, you know, we, we just have more. Um, staff on board because I know how some things can happen, uh, based on, you know, experience. So, but far as that, everything else is good. And, um, yeah, that's, that, that's, that's it, Dr. Wool.
Great. So I'm gonna ask if we could take a five-minute break to allow all of our principals. To go back to their lives and log off before we go to the next item. They're more than welcome to stay, but I know that you all, like, every one of us have ten other things that you need to be doing right now. Thank you all. Don't send me the emails, Franco and, um, Dr. Shen and David, they're the ones. Go straight to them because I'm about a hundred and fifty emails behind and I don't want to not get you taken care of. So go right to the source, we're here to take care of you. But trustees, can we have a five-minute break?
Yes.
So, thank you all so much.
Thank you all.
I won't visit, I have that stage.
Send my emails right now. Bye, guys. Thank you trustees.
All right. Now, um, just a question, how do I get ahold of Gateway and?
I just responded to your, um, chat and yes, it's.
Because they have seniors too.
Yes, they'll be doing their own ceremony, but yes, they do, yes. So, um, it's Charles Ramirez, C Ramirez. Dot edu, I put it in the chat for you.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Is there any other school or group I need to get, um, kente cloth to? Do I covered everybody with Gateway and Vista?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
I don't know if we have any non-public school place.
Oh, there are six.
African-American students.
There are six seniors that in, in, that's NPPS?
Yeah, the na- the non-public schools where we have.
Yes, how do I get ahold of them?
So, I think Sonya Neely Johnson would be the right connection, and if you can make that connection so that we don't miss out on those students, even though they don't attend our school.
Right, I did see, I did a query and all, and there are six of them, six or seven, that are seniors that are African-American.
Got it.
Okay, so I will, I, I know Sonya, I'll look up her email, and I'll get, um, sent out, um, a message to her.
And it looks like while we were transitioning, a hand came up. So while we're kinda, the, the break was really just, uh, let it go, we have one hand in the audience, do we mind if we let them unmute?
Yeah, okay.
There, so it might be relevant to our conversation right now. Stephanie Hearn. You can unmute it.
Good evening, board. Good evening, everybody. How you guys doing? Yes, this is relevant, because you asked about the non-public, and I, you know, I deal with non-public, I deal with Gateway. And by the way, I'm Stephanie Hearn, and I'm the assessment supervisor for the district. Um, so, uh, Jane Messina, um, you might wanna check with Edith Jordan McCormick for secondary home teaching. Because there are two students there that are qualifying for the Golden State Seal Award, that's gonna go on the diploma. So they may, and I don't know their, their, um, ethnicity, but you might wanna check to make sure, to see if they were African-American too.
Okay, there's secondary home teaching, Edith McCormick?
Right, secondary home teaching, and you wanna check with Edith Jordan McCormick at Vista.
Okay, at Vista, okay.
And then for the non-public students, um, you're right to go through, um, that, the person actually would be John Bannister.
Okay, let me write that down, John? They have district emails I can find?
Yes, they do, yes, they do.
Okay. For the non-public schools, that's John Bannister.
John Bannister, correct.
I had put them in my account, cause I saw them in Power School, when I saw the, cause I did a, a, a query by twelve graders. And then I saw the NTP, NPSS, non-public schools, I said, okay, now how do I find them? Thank you so much, Mrs. Hearn, for that information. Anything else?
No, and thank you, board, for the, the chance to speak.
No problem.
Thank you all for, um, being a little informal as we go through things.
Well, I, I thank her, because now I won't miss anyone. Okay, now do I need to be on for the next?
You can, you can go ahead and exit on out, we're just gonna go quickly into safety there. Um, so we'll pivot right now, and.
Okay.
We wanted.
I'll see you later. Thank you, Mr. Wool.
Thank you so much. So we just want to talk a little bit now about where we are right now with our COVID testing protocols and practices.
Dr. Wool, so we don't get a break? Uh, you know, I just got all confused.
No, let's take that break, okay.
No, I don't need one this time, I'm, I was just curious, I was just making sure that I didn't miss something in the transition. Okay, so we're just moving on to, uh, trustee, trustee Christian, we're moving on to B, COVID testing?
Yes, yes, do we, do we need to stand the meeting?
No, we're gonna be fine, we're at five.
We're gonna be good.
We can do X two, and still be done by six this time.
You think I'm gonna have just two questions? Look at you, okay, I'm gonna try to keep it small, it's just a couple of questions, go ahead, I'm gonna try to get this out of here at six too. Go ahead, I, I, I'm gonna be quiet, trustee Christian, I'm gonna listen.
All right, so I'm gonna pass it back to, um, Dr. Shen, who's just gonna talk a little bit about, um, there's been a lot of not confusion, but as we've been getting our testing protocols in place, there's a lot of anxiety. About testing is the best way to say it, you know, uh, people that are a hundred percent in favor, and everyone should be tested. And then there's others that, oh, I don't wanna be tested at all, and everyone gets on one side or the other, it's very emotional. We think we're going down a pretty good pathway, where we think we have a good cadence that we're gonna try as we go into our random, to be able to do things. And we're working with our associations on that, but I'll let Ann just give a brief update, this is not a super in-depth thing of where we're at right now.
Well, actually, I do have a small presentation to review over our COVID, uh, testing update. Uh, thank you so much for that, uh, opening, Dr. Wool, appreciate it. Okay, just to remind all of us that, uh, the testing process is also aligned with our district safety department's mission as I described last time, because it establishes an information system throughout the district to minimize loss of life. This is the most important thing that we do in, uh, in the school district. So just to briefly review over what has been happening in the past three weeks. We have been providing onsite COVID testing at all fifty-four sites. Um, and on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays, all fifty-four sites are open for in-person learning. And during these times that our staff and students are on campus, the testing is available, uh, for everyone to engage in. Due to the scope of our large district, we've had to, were, uh, find two different companies to work with. One company could not handle all fifty-four campuses. So currently, we are working with Predacon for elementary schools, and then for our middle and high schools, we are working with a company named Agile Force. And Agile Force also, uh, provides our athletics testing on Tuesdays and Thursdays. These are the testing requirements and procedures, uh, for our students and staff. So for our students, they are to complete a parental consent form. Obviously, our students are not of the age where they can consent to something that's on their own, so they sign a form. Uh, or their parents sign a form, giving us consent, or giving the testers consent to do the testing. And then another form that has to be filled out by staff and students is called the test requisition form. This form has to be completed each and every time an individual tests. Because for the testing companies, this is kind of like their receipt or their invoice, that they must turn in in order to be reimbursed for the testing, uh, that they're providing. Again, no individual or our provider is charged ultimately, so it's no cost to us. But how the funding works is the insurance company, uh, I mean, the testing company bills the insurance company uh, who then gets a reimbursement from the Federal CARES Act. So again, Kaiser is not having to pay for this in the end, Federal CARES Act, uh, reimburses them. And our testing company does not charge us necessarily, uh, for, for the entire testing fee, because they get the reimbursement, uh, from the carriers. And there are two ways that individuals can, uh, sign up for testing. They can either schedule an appointment online, or they can just walk up with these testing forms ready at the sites. And, uh, they also have two options for the type of swabs that they would like. We know that the nasal swab is the preferred option for the testing companies, because it gives you a better sample. At the same time, we do understand that it could, um, for especially younger children, be a little more invasive. So we also ask the testing companies to offer a mouth swab option, should the individual request it. But again, the individual needs to request it when they walk up, uh, to the tester. Okay, so what happens to the results? After the tests have been completed, uh, obviously, we need to get the test results. So this is the process that we have established for the district. So the companies notify the district through email, a secondary company, uh, that works with the secondary does the email option of list, uh, sending us the list. And then the elementary company has an online portal system in which we actually log onto the portal to see the test results. And this is provided to me and Mr. Booker at the district level. Companies also notify the site principals directly through the email list and the online portal. Companies also notify individuals through the contact information that individuals provide to them on the forms. Now, what happens if there is a positive result? We do have an established protocol for when there is a positive result. And the number one thing that the companies do is notify, actually, they call me around midnight to let me know that there is a positive case, so we can have immediate, um, attention to the positive case. And then the district notifies the principal, in which case that is me. I will, I call principals anywhere between the hours of six AM, uh, to seven AM to let them know that there's a positive case on their campus, and provide the directions, uh, for them to contact not only the positive case, but all within the cohort with that positive case. To let them know that we are transitioning them, uh, back to distance learning for ten days. Also, after they make that first move, principals will then send out notification letters to the staff and the community. Uh, which, again, says to the community, we have a positive case on campus, and we are responding to it appropriately with steps such as deep cleaning, contact tracing, uh, and again quarantining of any that may have been affected. At the same time, there is a concurrent, um, system that is at play. So at the same time that I provide the direction to the principal, I also provide the direction to the principal to send a message to our COVID hotline. This is how our COVID response team now gets a hold of the contact tracing process. As a result of the information that is provided to the COVID response team, uh, they will respond to this message, this email with directions for what the positive case will need to do, and what all close contacts will need to do. So again, they, uh, our COVID response team consists of our district nurses who do the research, making all the phone calls and all the contacts necessary to figure out who was in close contact with the case. And when we say close contact, the definition, um, from CDPH is that you must have been with, um, less than six feet distance from the positive case for more than fifteen-minute periods at a time. So again, unless you were with, close to that person for more than fifteen minutes at a time, you are not considered a close contact or at risk of, um, getting it from the case. And the COVID response team, again, prompts the school to close the hubs, and also for the cohorts to quarantine for ten days, that's the state guidance right now, for ten days, and the deep cleaning, uh, to happen from the facilities team. Then, of course, principals notify staff and community of the positive case on campus, making sure that everyone is aware that that has happened. Uh, and we also ask the district will, um, put it on our dashboard. And I didn't get to add that to my slide, but yes, it's always advertised in our dashboard. Once a positive case has been confirmed, and why do I say this? Just because it was reported to the COVID hotline, this does not necessarily mean that it was confirmed. It's only after they've done all of the tracing, they will be able to confirm, uh, whether it was a positive case. So for us, uh, next steps in our, um, testing, we will continue to test onsite until everyone has been tested. And then we will develop a cadence for future testing. It looks like we're there, we're pretty close. Uh, and we will provide that random testing according to that cadence. And this concludes my brief presentation.
And so the, the one piece, I think it's really important to stand this slide for a second. As we wa- are beginning to pivot to that random, we have a couple sites that haven't fully gotten tested in the first round. So we're gonna be dialing back to make sure that those sites do get their first round of all getting tested before we pivot into something random. And so we're working site by site, because I think there's been confusion about, is it mandatory? The expectation is that we're still testing everyone participating, with the exception of those that have the legitimate waiver. And in athletics, there are no waivers, you have to test to participate. And there's very few waivers on the other side. So, we're hoping to get things moving better on everyone that's been, not been tested. Because our, I'm still hearing reports of a couple sites where we're a little farther behind than we wanna be. And so we're gonna work to get those sites caught up and connected.
Okay, thank you. And so, uh, questions, uh, trustee Smith Foles.
Okay, so, I, I think you kinda answered my question, but I just wanna, I just wanna hear it again. So, testing is mandatory for the fir- for everyone who's participating in this program at first. And then testing's going to start to be random, like randomly selected people to test. If they come to you and say, it's time for your test, that means you take the test. You cannot deny the test unless you have a waiver. Is that accurate? And you cannot deny it at all if you're an athlete. If you're, if you're playing sports with the district, you have to be tested, no ifs, ands, and buts. But if, if I'm a, if I'm a kindergarten student, I'm a kindergarten student, I'm in a hub, I haven't been tested. They come to me and they say, okay, it's time for your test, then I get tested, right? My, my parents notified or whatever, and then I get tested.
That's where we're, that's where we're trying to get everybody to that place, so that it's comfortable. And once we move into that random, it's actually gonna be easier on some of the reporting, because we'll tell you a couple days in advance. Okay, next week, you are the random group. You are, you are, you are. And the model that we're looking towards moving towards is taking a percentage from each cohort. So not a percentage of the school, but a percentage of each cohort. So therefore, you're testing some individuals in every single cohort that's in existence on the campus. Because that's the cleanest and best way to quickly ensure that you're checking everyone without having to check everyone every week.
And so inside that cohort model, that includes the, let's say, two adults, right, and the kids? So it'd be like, to- total of twelve kids, we'll take ten percent of twelve kids, and that you, that kinda, or twelve.
That, that, that's what, that's where we're working on, making sure. And then adults are our own employees, could get tested on a more regular basis, because they end up interacting with more folks. There, so we may continue to test our employees on a more regular basis.
Okay, so my question is, this is a seven-week summer schools, or not summer school, our spring program, seven weeks. We're three weeks in, right? How many are we, can you please send me? And I would probably think trustee Christian would also wanna know, can you send me how many we're still lacking? You know, we're three weeks into a seven-week program, what schools are we not hitting that everybody's been tested once? Do you know what I mean?
So, we're working on it, you would think it's easy to get that number. It hasn't been, because we're working with outside vendors. And so, as soon as I have it, you will have it, because that's been kind of our dialing back to figure it out who has and who has not, that's been our biggest challenge. And sometimes, it's hearsay, somebody tells me, and then we have to go investigate, is that true or not true? So, we're working.
Because of the outside vendors, there's not a clean line, kinda of communication between who has and hasn't been tested, is that what I'm hearing?
It's also, it's also a data issue, because the federal government requires certain forms to be filled out for testing. A- as people may not know, the federal government actually does pay the testing companies. So, what happens is, you have to turn in your insurance information, which has been a whole other issue that families have been upset about. But that's because the federal government wants that to go through, but then they reimburse the testing company. Either way, whether they have insurance or don't have insurance, and that meant that everyone had to hand-fill out forms. There tends to be miscoding of information, we don't have the ability to just give a download of here's the student's name, address, email address. And so, we found that in some cases where the birthday was marked, they were putting the date of the test. In some cases, they were putting a nickname instead of the regular name. In some cases, the email was missing the at sign. And so that's been part of the delays, is that data error. And this isn't just our district, I've talked to other districts, they had the same challenges of getting everything going. Once we move to the random, it'll be easier, because we'll be able to pre-select who's being tested and make sure that data is correct when they submit their form, and we'll get results back faster and more accurately.
Okay, so I'm.
Okay, so I'm, the, the look on my face is very nervous. That make, that whole, what you just told me makes me very nervous about the accuracy of how many, the accuracy of our, like our information. Does that, Dr. Shen, does that make sense what I'm saying? Like it just seems like that's a big, that's a big thing, having the birthday, that could be the test day, that could be not, that's huge to me. So are we telling our sites because that's a little bit hiccup-y? Please make sure that you're doing temperatures, please make sure that you're kind of keeping an eye out on for these other. And we know kids can be asymptomatic, we know people can be asymptomatic. But that, I just want everybody to know that that makes me very nervous, what I, like, what's, what I just heard.
It, it does for us as well. That's why we're, every time we get feedback, we try to refine the process. I, I can tell you that Dr. Shen, Michael Booker, and the COVID response team are working around the clock on this. The, the first time we had positives, I got my first call at six fifteen in the morning as we were going, and we were already rallying in on that. And it, you would say it's a learning process. It, there's a lot of people that have a lot of strong emotions on all sides of the issue. And we're trying to navigate everybody to get the forms done right, get the process done right. And I think each day it gets better. And we're going to continue to test until we feel that we've got it safe and we're going to continue with those safety protocols to make sure that it's safe for all. So.
So the more.
I understand nervousness.
So the more information would be the best for me, like whatever you have, I would like some information on it. Like whatever, like in your process of like cleaning this up and making sure that it's done. I understand that the outside vendors become a barrier, but that barrier can't then become a barrier for the safety for our kids, staff, families, everybody on campus. The dashboard is updated every day, is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Dashboard is updated every good.
And I'm working to make sure that, as, as Ann said, the protocol, they know every positive. Then what's supposed to be occurring, and we're going to make sure it continues to occur, is both the associations and the board are going to get a message from me.
Okay.
And it should come from me saying, hey, we got two more positives today. It's a student at this school, we're dealing with it. We have a positive today, it's this, we have a false positive, we're doing this. So that's the protocol, we're trying to make sure is in place so that, and I'll send, you know, I'll try to group them into one message. But each day I'm going to try to send an update.
And I think that would help us just knowing, it helps all the way around. The more details and knowing where the cases are, the better, the more details of knowing. We don't want something to become a hotspot, we want to make sure that we're like on it. And then the testing I think has to get, oh, it's not a question, so I'm going to say my comment right now, trustee Christians, I'll have to say it again. I think the testing has to get under control, like we have to figure that out, everybody has to be tested. Because I don't want us in week five and now everybody's tested. Well, then that's just two weeks of random. Like we, you know, we need to do it when we say we were going to do it to the best of our ability. And I think everybody is working to the best of their capacity. But let's just make sure that we get the testing under control because we want to increase the confidence and make sure that we understand that the community is, is kind of, the community is a little like, ah, because they don't know mandatory versus not mandatory, filling out the insurance, not filling out the insurance, it's just a lot of confusion. So and I think that if you guys, if we could put this on the website somehow, so we could eliminate some of that because then you won't get the hundred emails, like why do I have to fill out my insurance? Like there's a thousand emails, I was like, stop asking me for insurance information, I was like, I don't know what you're talking about. So like that would work out. Trustee Christian, those are all of my questions. Thank you, Dr. Shen for the presentation. I think it should come back to the whole board, but you know, that's just me. I like the, I like the presentation, I like the, I like where you're going, and I like the idea of the whole community hearing that. I think it would add to the trust factor if everyone can be on the same page and on one accord. I'm finished, trustee Christian.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, do we need to extend the meeting because it's almost six?
Yeah, I tried, but it didn't work. We should have just done one item. Graduation.
Yeah.
How much time do we need for the third item, Ann?
So what I really wanted to do was to share a video that one of our site principals made in regards to the safety procedures for reopening of spring, for spring, that again, she shared with her community. I think that can explain, well, I can show you better than I can tell you, right? So at last, last month, I presented the reopening plans along with the safety protocols that are guided by our handbook. And we, and my next steps was that we would be collaborating with our site principals. And I just want to show you as a result of this robust collaboration with them. Okay, sorry.
Because we haven't finished item two yet, and we have to determine how long to extend the meeting.
Okay, I think it depends on the Q and A and discussion, but maybe, and I'm late for class, but I'm willing to make that sacrifice. Maybe just twenty more minutes.
So six, six twenty-five, that's the pad.
Okay, that'll work.
Trustee Christian, do you want to move that item to some, a different time, or do you want to just keep having it?
Well.
Well, what do you think?
Let, let's get the video shown. I know that Ann will be late, but we'll get it done real quick. And then I'll dismiss her to class and take the questions because I can answer pretty much all of them, if that would be okay.
Yeah, that's good. And I just, only question I just want to go back before we shift gears is, you know, you know, since we've been open, you know, far as, you know, the, the testing, what's some of the sites that, some of the sites that came back positive?
So we, we've had a couple positives. Interestingly enough, we, we had several of our K eights had positives there, and it was mostly students. We did have one staff member, we had a middle school positive as well, another elementary. And then we've had a couple that weren't tested by us, where the families went out and then reported to us that they had had a positive, and we've had to address. But there's only been nine total across the district. I don't have the total number tested, so I'm going to have to get back to you to give you that number. But I know at least ten got tested because I got tested and I was negative. So I can guarantee that there's at least that many.
Right.
Um, it's been better than I would have anticipated for opening up to over six thousand students across fifty-four sites.
Right. And, and I guess, you know, as down the road, a challenge will come when the whole population comes back. So we got, we, we have to prepare when the whole population do come, you know, we have stuff ready to go for the larger population.
Yep. So before we jump on, I'm, public comment would be next, I believe.
Yes.
Or comments, I'm looking to see if any hands go up on, on this item. And I'm not seeing any, so it'd be your comments, then we can go to the next item.
Okay, you have any, you, you already did your comment, trustee, trustee small, Smith falls, okay.
I did already do my comment, but you know, trustee Christian, hold on, since we extended, you know, I'll add something else. I just, I agree with trustee Christian, we have to get it right now, get it right in this moment. Because once, once we, we, once we add more people, we add more complications. So we need to get it right in this very small tiny box. So we will be able to expand and have our communication down packed, know, the parents will know exactly what's needed. So we can go in as safe as possible for everyone. I think that's a big deal. And we need to get some of those, we need to kind of standardize the language, like standardize what we're saying when we mean mandatory, standardize what we're saying when we mean random, standardize what we're saying when we mean, you know, all teachers, all staff, all athletes, whatever. Like we need to be clear about that, so then everybody walks in with the same understanding. Thank you, trustee Christian.
Okay, no problem. So we shift gears, we go to the next item.
So, Ann, video time, let's go right into it so you can get, get out and get to where you need to go.
So I will be sharing the video of Montalvin principal along with her staff. This is the ad, so let me go back. Oh no, wait a minute.
So when you click share, you have to make sure you click to allow to share computer sound as well.
Oh my goodness, okay.
So you may want to unshare and then do that again.
Oof, this is a lot for me to try to. I don't think I've ever shared a video yet, so this is new learning for me, hold on a minute, I may have to give.
So when you do that, down on the bottom left, there's a little box that says share sound.
Hold on a minute, I can't even get it back to the video because this is not even the video itself. Stop, Montalvin. Let me try to escape. I thought about giving it to Veronica to do.
You forward it to Tony?
Right, okay, so I need to skip the ad. Okay, here it is. Can you see?
No, yeah.
No, you have to click share again.
Click share again?
You click, when you click the share, make sure you click on the bottom left. When you click share screen and you select the item that you're going to share, on the bottom left, there's a little button that says share sound that you have to click the little checkbox inside.
I don't even see that.
Okay, can you forward the link to me?
Yes, I'm so sorry, my God.
I will quickly see if I can't grab it.
Oh my goodness, thank you, my goodness.
Space and grace, folks.
Yes, please, thank you, I apologize.
Sometimes the technology does not work the way we thought, so let me pull up my email so I can get that.
Okay, just sent it to you.
Give me a minute for it to come open. I'm just waiting for the email to come through. There we go, let me copy that YouTube in. Give me just one moment to get it set up.
And one day I'll have to do a shared screening with, I mean, do a Zoom meeting with you to learn how to do that, sorry.
I have to go through the ad like everyone else.
Video. It's a great video though, she did a fantastic job welcoming her community back onsite.
And can you tell the audience who Montalvin's principal is? She's in my ward, so I'm very happy. Can you tell?
Yay, yes, Mrs. Catherine Okostavraskas. We know, and her husband is also the principal of Verdi Elementary, and they are the dynamic duo, fantastic site leaders.
I did not know that, I didn't know we had two married principals in the district, that's awesome.
Yes, yes.
He's the principal of Verdi.
Yes, we're so happy that they're both serving in our community. And so many of our principals did the same thing. As a result of all of our meetings and learning about the protocols from our handbook, they decided to develop their own either documents or signage around the campus. And many also chose to make their own videos along with their staff to send to their families.
Okay, so I am working on getting it to come up right now. This should be it, let's see if it works.
Families, it's Miss Okostavraskas, and we're super excited that you're going to be returning to campus on Monday, April nineteenth. We are, we've been working really hard, your teachers are pumped, they've been working really hard. And we're thinking through all the procedures to make sure that your return is very safe. Please make sure that you watch the whole video to make sure you have all the key information. School will start on Monday, and it's going to be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, nine thirty in the morning to two o'clock. You're going to need to bring your backpack with your charged tablet, a set of headphones, a water bottle, and then any materials that your teachers say to bring. Please know that you do not have to wear your uniform, but you do have to wear a mask properly covering your mouth and your nose. We will also have a lot of masks here on campus if you forget one.
Hi, Montalvin families, I'm Ms. Welkner, the vice principal, and I'm going to tell you about our arrival procedures because they look a little different than they used to. Kindergarten through third grade is going to be dropped off here in the front of the school by the main office. Fourth grade through eighth grade is going to be dropped off by the black gate on the other side. When you arrive, only the student is going to get out of the car. So parents and family members, please stay inside the car. When you pull up to the school, everyone should already be wearing their masks, even the adults who are not getting out of the car. When you pull up to Montalvin, someone is going to greet you and take your temperature right away. Good morning.
Good morning. You're all clear.
Once you've been cleared, you're going to head to the ramp to go to the next check-in station. When you reach the top of the ramp, you're going to notice some stickers on the ground. These stickers are here to help you stay six feet apart from the person in front of you. So you need to wait your turn on each sticker until you get to the front, where you're going to see a staff member at a table. But first, you're going to want to stop and use hand sanitizer. Then you're going to be asked a couple questions to make sure you're healthy.
Hi, I'm so glad you're here today. Are you feeling well today?
Yes.
Excellent. I want to go ahead and double check your temperature. It's green, you are set to go, I'm marking you for attendance, have a great day.
Thanks. If you have class at nine thirty, you'll head right inside to your classroom to begin your school day. If you don't have class until ten o'clock, you're going to head out to the yard to join Coach Pete for morning PE. Now let's take us tour of the school.
All right, everybody, our campus looks very different than when the last time you were here a whole year ago. I want to show you around. As you can see, there are signs everywhere reminding you that you need to stay six feet apart, that you need to wear your mask, and that you need to cover your nose anytime that you're going to cough. Let's come on in and let me show you around. When you enter, you're going to see that we've got the same signage everywhere. Right over here, we've got more hand sanitizer, and make sure you put it on. Anytime that you need to come to the office, you'll notice that we've got the stickers that Ms. Welkner was telling you about. There you need to stand. We also have directional signs in the hallway. When you're walking this way, you're walking on this side. When you need to go this way, you're going to walk on the opposing side. Make sure that you notice the direction, directional stickers. As you can see, the signs are everywhere, and we have hand sanitizer everywhere on campus. And so we want to make sure that when you are in the building, that you're always wearing your mask. That's why we've added so many signs, that you're making sure that you're sanitizing your hand at every opportunity that you get. And in the event that there are more people in the hallway, that we're all walking on our own side to make sure that we're socially distancing. Now let's go take a look at what a classroom looks like. All right, let's check out a classroom. The very first thing you'll notice is that we've got a sign in the front of the room. It tells you what team is going to be learning here, and it says that they're actively learning. After learning has happened, our teachers are going to flip this over and say, the room has been used, please clean it. And families know that our rooms are going to be thoroughly cleaned to make sure that they're ready for student learning the next day. So let's go check out this classroom. As you enter, you're going to notice a sign that shows you how it is that we need to stop the spread of germs. Now, when you come in, it's going to look very different. We used to sit in groups and be really close to each other, and now all of our desks have been designed to be six feet apart. You might also notice that they're all facing the front, because we want to make sure that every student is facing the same direction. You might also notice that there are some dots on the desk, we've got a green dot and a blue dot. You're going to have an assigned seat that will not change. And that's because we want to make sure that you're exactly socially distancing in the classroom six feet apart every single day. So know that that's happening. I also want to show you that we have these new contraptions. Guess what? It's a hand sanitizer station in the classroom at every door so that anytime you're coming into the classroom or anytime that you're coming out, you are hand sanitizing. I also want to show you something in our water fountain, so let's walk this way. And so we're going to walk quickly down the hallway. Again, walking on this side, if you're walking this direction and on the opposing one, if you're walking on the other direction. You might also remember that I said at the beginning that you should bring a water bottle. And that's because our water fountains have been turned off. So we do not want students drinking out of the water fountain. We do however, want you to bring a water bottle because we have water filling station. When you come to the water fountain, the very first thing you're going to do is you're going to sanitize your hands. Then you're going to grab your water bottle. You will open it now that you've sanitized your hands and you're going to place it underneath you and you're going to push the button to fill up your water bottle. Then you'll close it and you will, um, drink it in our designated areas. We also want to tell you that our bathrooms have looked a little different. And they have signage for the number of people that are allowed to be in the bathroom at a time. If the bathroom is full, we have dots on the ground that tell you where it is that you need to stand to wait your turn. That's what it looks like now. Very different, but all designed to make sure that you are safe.
Boys and girls, cats and dogs, fish and frogs, welcome back to Montalvin. We are now going to go over some basic rules when we are going to be using the playground. And it's going to be the same rules that we apply inside the school that we're using outside. So when you see before you play, before you go into play structure or touch any of the equipment, you see we will have hand sanitizer right there for you. Make sure you get some hand sanitizer, wash your hands before and after you play. You will also notice on the grass that there are Xs or spots that keep us six feet away from each other. Just to remind us when we are playing to keep a safe distance away from each other. You must wear your mask at all times. All right? So when you come to school early in the morning, if you start at 9:30, you're going to go straight to class. If you start at 10, you're going to come to the playground in a safe spot. We have benches and tables um, distanced away from each other. So you'll have a safe space to sit down. We'll have snacks provided for you as well too. If you would like to bring lunch, feel free to bring lunch, but we will also be providing lunch for you as well too.
At the end of the school day at 2 o'clock, you're going to be picked up on the same side of the school where you were dropped off. So kindergarten through third grade by the main office and fourth grade through eighth grade by the black gate. Students are going to be waiting for their families, separated six feet apart, still wearing your mask over your mouth and nose. And you're going to be on the lookout for your family so that when your family pulls up, you are ready and that our traffic doesn't get too bad. Families, again, just like in the morning, adults need to stay in the car and wear a mask. And a staff member will walk the student to the car. Families, if you need to pick up your student early for any reason, you must call the main office first. And a staff member will walk the student out to your car. So please do not get out of your cars and do not go to the main office. Unfortunately, at this time, our campus cannot have visitors. So if you need to pick up your child early, just give the office a call.
Again, we are so excited to see you guys back on campus and thank you so much for watching this whole video. Please feel free to watch it again and reference it so you are ready for school on Monday, the 19th. After you watch this video, you can scroll down and you're going to see two different documents that you need to sign in order for your students to participate. The first one is a contract agreeing to this additional in-person support. Please know that we have very limited seats and so when you are agreeing to the contract of in-person support, that you're committing to coming to school every day, Monday through Wednesday through the end of the school year. Please only take the spot if you're going to use it every day. We want to get all the students back that want to be back. You're also going to sign a liability waiver. In that waiver, it's going to explain to you that obviously we're in a pandemic and we're taking all of those precautions and safety measures necessary, which also include COVID testing. So our students will receive a random COVID test and we want to make sure that we have your permission to be able to do that. You need to check and sign both of the documents on this Google form. We'll get a notification that you did and then your child will be ready to go on Monday. Thank you. And again, if you have any questions, feel free to call our office and we'll see you on Monday at 9:30.
So there we go. And that concludes our presentation, correct?
Yes. Wonderful. That says it all, right? I can show you better than I can tell you.
It's great. And, um, I just wanted to say we need, every school actually needs a video.
So this was, um, some of our principals obviously jump ahead and do way more. We will be working as we plan for the fall to get something more personal everywhere.
Cool. Uh, questions, trustee, trustee, uh, Smith falls.
But you know, my question was, when are we going to have every school have a video? That was going to be my question, trustee Christian. Um, I think that what we just saw is what we're talking about, about upping community trust. It's literally, I would like to have seen the isolation room, but that's the only thing that I didn't see. I like the enthusiasm of the staff. I like how they were very clear. It wasn't any, um, maybe we'll do this and possibly we'll do this. It was very clear. You get dropped off here. You get picked up here. It was very clear. This is different than it usually is. Our campus is closed to visitors. If you need this, this is going to happen here. Um, I thought that was great. I, um, I really want this to be part of the standard. If your school wants to open, then this is what you need to put out to your community. Something along this line. Have your own flair to it. Have your own flavor to it, but here's the rubric. This is what you need to make sure is in the video. And then, you know, add your own spice to it if you want to. I like the, I, I like the fact that the, um, principal was clear with the documentation that needs to be filled out. Um, I think the, the only criticism I would have is just, it's the random testing, like fill it out. So your child will be randomly tested, but in the beginning, every child will be tested. You know what I mean? We have to be clear with that because that's where we get some confusion in. Um, if the principal would add a little blurb about, you know, fill out the insurance, you know what I mean? Dr. Wool, what we were talking about, that's the way we can have families be very clear about what's happening. Um, I would have liked to seen where they were talking about sitting on the, the, the benches and spread out, but I do like the fact that the, um, the staff member, the teacher was actually walking the student and saying, okay, when you come, if you don't go start your classes, where you're going to go and this is what you're going to do. So I think it was very good. Trustee Christian, those were, that was not a single question in there except for the first part. So that was my comment also. So that was my comment at the same time. Thank you so much for sharing that. Again, I think that should be shown to the whole board and the community at large. So we are, uh, doing what we can to up the trust.
And so only thing I could add to that is we preparing for the fall. And so we want to make sure that videos like this is given the, the information for the community at large to be able to experience and understand the process of how everything is going to operate.
So we'll take a look and see if there's any public comment on this item as we close out. I'm looking for hands. As I'm not seeing hands, our next steps will continue to work with our sites to create more and more communication. Videos and other pieces. Um, our team will be trying to get a definitive what sites have not fully done the first round of testing to get them scheduled for next week. Because we want to make sure that that gets done as we move into random. And again, our random is really not that random in the sense that we plan to hit every single cohort. That does in a sense give some safety and security that we're not leaving anyone behind. We know that it's been a challenge. There, there's people's emotions on all sides and we will continue to work through those, um, different hiccups to make sure that we maintain the most safe possible opening. But we appreciated the trustees seeing the video and will continue to try to refine our practices.
All right, that's it. I don't have anything else. And I believe what, that's the end of our meeting.
Right on time. Yes.
Yeah. So our next meeting will be June the 12th. Um, June the 12th at 4 o'clock PM, June the 12th.
And right now we'll probably be talking about summer school among other things.
I have a question. Oh no, that's May 12th. Never mind. We have a board. We had, remember we have a special board meeting, but that's May 12th, not June 12th.
Yeah, not June 12th.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we normally are the first week because of graduations on the fourth through that week. We move safety a week later to be on the 12th to get going. So that's it. Thank you all.
It'll be on the 14th, uh, trustee Christian, not on the 12th.
On the 14th.
14th is Monday.
Oh, no, I don't think it's the 14th.
You just confused me. Where, I'm confused.
Um, no, it's not the 12th. You're right. It is the 14th. It's the 11th. It's a Friday. So it is the 14th.
Okay, so it's the 14th. Uh, Mr. Franco, it's the 14th of June.
Yes.
And, and a question before we leave off, summer school starts when? The tentative day.
Also the 14th.
Okay. So it's, everything is coming quick.
Now, it's, it might be slightly different at a couple of sites because we're running such a large summer school. But the, the main program, I believe, starts that week.
Okay. All right. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
The meeting is adjourned.
All right. Have a great night.
Bye.